Good evening, everybody. Today is Wednesday, October 9th, 2024, and this is the regular board meeting for the School District of Waukesha Board of Education. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Eddinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Mark Barowski.
Here.
Eric Brooks.
Here.
Thomas Harland.
Here.
Betty Koenig.
Here.
Kerry Kazlowski.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
David Wad.
Here.
Anthony Zanobia.
Here.
Kelly Piasak.
Here. Welcome, everyone. Mrs. Eddinger, can you please also verify that the meeting has been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. We are going to jump right into a great celebration tonight with bright lights, so I will turn it over to Dr. Seibert.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Piasak. One year ago in October, we began a new tradition in the School District of Waukesha, recognizing local businesses and organizations who are very loyal supporters of the School District of Waukesha. And so since it's October, once again, we are going to recognize five additional partners this year, and we will do that year after year for their incredible support of our students, our staff, and the entire School District of Waukesha. So to lead us in that process, I'm going to welcome to the podium Molly Habenschild. She is our Coordinator of Career and Technical Education Programming in the School District. And she is going to give you an overview of each of these tremendous companies and organizations, after which time the individuals from those companies will have an opportunity to say a few words if they choose, and we will take a picture of Dr. Piasak handing them their community partner with the School District of Waukesha Award. So again, thank you all for being here. Thank you for your support. And Molly, I'm happy to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Oh, green means go. All right. We're good. Thank you for having me here tonight. I have the absolute honor to get to work with programming like this. So we're really looking today at focusing on our work-based learning partners. So this is a different vein than we took last year in terms of the people that we work with and our organization. So work-based learning, what is it? According to DPI, it allows students to work in environments, learn new skills, build a career identity, and better chart a path through post-secondary education and training that aligns with their career goals. The hands-on nature of most work-based learning allows youth to develop employability skills. This includes forming positive relationships with adults, developing social capital, building networks within their career pathway, and these skills are assets and a benefit to students beyond high school regardless of what their pathway is beyond high school. I was a co-op student back in high school, so it's an amazing thing to be able to be a part of it now, kind of on the other end of things. So I reached out to our school work-based learning coordinators or teachers that do the supervision, and I said, who do you work with that you just absolutely love going back to year after year that understand what it's like to hire high schoolers and their schedules and the demands that they're in, but also provide that mentorship for them to help them explore those career pathways now? And here are our results today, so I'm excited to introduce them. So first up, we have Tri-City National Bank. Darius, if you want to join me up here. So Tri-City National Bank, according to Dan Prothero, hires our youth apprentice students that have an interest in banking or finance. They've been a proud partner since 2019, and Darius is absolutely great to work with. He mentors students and teaches them what it takes to be successful in the financial world. He's an excellent mentor, teacher, coach, and all-around great person. In the past, Tri-City has even created special accounts for South students looking to begin their banking journey and savings and investment. So if you walk into the lobby at the Sunset location, you'll see several of our community partner awards proudly displayed at the workstations. So we are extremely grateful for the continued partnership and their willingness to hire our students and launch their careers in the world of banking and finance. So thank you for everything that you do.
So I have a little speech, and I'm not 20 anymore, so I have to read it. Honorable members of the school board, esteemed educators, and community members, I am truly honored to accept this reward today. It is not just a recognition of my individual efforts, but also a reflection of the incredible team that I have working for me. While I may create the vision, my team is the painters, and they make sure that my vision comes to fruition. I think the co-op program is an especially important piece to helping better prepare our students for life after high school. For each of the three students that I have had the pleasure of working with, I have watched them gain life skills that we may have not have learned going through the same situation. The first two students that I have worked with, Nico Prince and Jason Martin, are both attending college and are doing quite well. My newest co-op, Ariana Gibbs, is another terrific addition to the team, and I expect remarkable things from her as well. Dan Prothero is a stellar educator and has always recommended students who fit the branch chemistry, and his decisions have helped make this a successful partnership. This award motivates me and my team to continue striving for excellence and to contribute positively to our community. I believe that our collective efforts can create an environment where everyone can succeed and shine. Thank you for this recognition and for believing in Tri-City National Bank. I look forward to our continued partnership.
We use "co-op" interchangeably with internship and youth apprentice, so just know you might hear all three, but they're all work-based learning programs. Up next, we have another financial institution. I hope there's not a fight in the parking lot. Landmark Credit Union. Matt's going to join me up here along with Leanne. So this came from Carol Dellis at West High School. She has been working with Matt and his team for the last 30 years. They've employed over 75 of our marketing and finance co-op students, or YAs. Many have continued working there full-time on college breaks. The management team is just phenomenal, the training is extensive, and their president is a frequent classroom speaker. The experience has included career-building, customer service, human relationship skills, and has positively impacted the students' lives beyond the day-to-day. Their partnership with Waukesha West has been a huge win for our community partner. In addition, Landmark Credit Union is a regular Waukesha Education Foundation sponsor. Thanks.
Follow this speech here. I'm not going to say that many words. I just want to say thank you very much, but it's really, the kids have been great, you know, for Landmark. And it says over 75. We've had over 100 kids in the last 30 years, and we've hired most of them. So it's been great. Carol Dellis at Waukesha West has been awesome. If anybody knows who she is, she is a wonderful, wonderful teacher, and they're lucky to have her. So, but thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Joining us next is Inio and Jason Velocat. If you want to join me up here. Thank you. This came from Wes Grolkowski at West High School. Well, he actually supervises all of our high schools. So he's extremely grateful for the partnership with Inio and Jason. First of all, Jason's always willing to hire students as well as take any necessary time to train them, which is a huge undertaking. He understands the importance of working with some students and their rather busy schedules. His flexibility on his part is wonderful, and he cannot stress enough how much that's appreciated. He's also helped facilitate students in what he considers to be a rich and rewarding pathway and showing them their future success. Inio is also a Gold Annual Waukesha Education Foundation sponsor and event sponsor. So thank you to you for the work that you do and your company.
Good evening. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the School District of Waukesha, not only for recognizing Inio Waukesha Engine, but helping us support the many great students in your I'd like to just provide you with some insights on how we launch the careers of your students as future engineers. Dating back to 2019, our Waukesha engineering teams work and your school district have been, in every sense of the word, a partnership. Thanks to the support and cooperation of the leaders in your district, we've been actively hiring co-ops in the Engineering Academy at Waukesha South to work summers and then as well throughout the year. The program thrives today due to the partnership with West. Each year, we've had a minimum of two to three students participate in these internships, and over the last five years, 20-plus students have worked on challenges such as engineering changes, CAD drafting, and other engineering-related activities. Many of these students are also receiving work-study credits through the Division of Workforce Development Program that makes the work they do even more valuable. As much as we hope the program has benefited the students and your district, I can assure you that it has also been of great value to us. Again, thanks for this opportunity. I'd like to thank the board, all the administrators, and my team back at Waukesha Engine for the support. We look forward to doing great things with the district.
Moving on to St. Luke's and Courtney and team. Come up. And team. So St. Luke's, we're looking at the childhood ministry-type department. They are a longtime partner of placing students in work-based learning and early childhood education. They graciously accept our students and work around their student's schedules. They also partner with our child development teachers and students for site visits, shadows, field placements, and employability opportunities throughout high school. Our high school students have the opportunity to go into the school, plan and implement lessons with a real-world, early childhood classroom. So it's a really fun opportunity. I got to chaperone a field trip once, and I was like, oh my gosh. They also, St. Luke's has received the Waukesha Education Foundation community partner in the past, so thank you.
Thank you so much. I am not a big public speaker. I work with children for a reason. So this is going to be short and sweet, but we just want to say thank you so much. It is so nice to know that the district recognizes how important early childhood is. So thank you guys so much, and please come visit us, because we'd love to see you.
Rounding out the group is Pro Health Care, Waukesha Memorial, and Sarah and team. Another long-term partner for work-based learning, hiring our students in the many facets of the organization to explore careers within the health industry. It stems from dietary, environmental, CNAs, and beyond. They are very flexible with student's schedules and willing to make things work. Pro Health Care shows up to many of our career exploration events, mock interview panelists, and our guest speakers. We always can go to them for support. They're also welcoming to the educators, learning more about the industry as well. They also provide funding to our Health Academy for scholarships, serve on the Governance Board to ensure our curriculum represents industry standards, and in addition, a regular Waukesha Education Foundation sponsor, event sponsor, and corporate award winner. Thank you again.
Thank you all. Like some of you, I did not formally prepare, but you know, at Pro Health Care, we're all about trying to introduce young people to careers in healthcare and try to really focus on that talent pipeline. And the School District of Waukesha has been a great partner in doing so. One of the things you may or may not know, we actually have a mentorship program with the Health Academy. I just saw an email the other day where we identify about 10 to 12 students every year, and we've really worked collaboratively with the Health Academy team to focus and reduce any barriers, to the point where we find transportation to bring students to one of our clinics on a monthly basis and meet with their mentors and do hands-on activities. So it's really a partnership, and we're truly honored to be partnering with all of you. So thank you.
Thank you again for this opportunity to recognize just some of our business partners that we do work with. Last year, we had over 140 students out working in a career that is aligned with something of interest. So it's a really great thing to see and hear that the community believes in these talent pipelines early. So again, thank you and have a great night.
Yeah. No, thank you so much, all of you, for being here. You're certainly free to move on with your evenings, but again, we can't thank you enough for your partnership, and we look forward to our future work with you as well. So thank you again.
Thank you so much. All right. We are going to move to our reports by our student representatives, and we have students Aiden and Jayla joining us from West tonight.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. I think it's setting up here for us. Give me one second. Slide show. All right. I'm Tahereh Deleon, honored to serve as principal at Waukesha West this year. And as some of you know, I'm lucky to have Ryan still in the district, because when things like this that are new to me come up, guess who I call? My friend Ryan. So I want to welcome our students for today. As I was asking people, this email came, and I said, okay, how do I do this? Like, who do I pick? There's so many kids to pick from, right? This is the best part of my job, talking about kids, talking about the amazing things that they're doing, how they're getting involved, and so forth. So today, I will let them take it away, but I want to introduce Aiden Obusu Asiadu and Jayla Fabian, and they will take it away for you this evening, okay?
Good evening. Today, we are going to share our experience at West and how it has helped us in our future careers.
Starting off with academics, I would like to share our Health Occupations class that gives our students, well, West students, an insight on medical careers. And she's brought in multiple people that are involved in the medical field, and we've got insights on multiple careers, and it's helped me choose what I want to do in the long run. And then, kind of like the opposite with TREC, you're given a year-long project where you're able to kind of like decipher what you want to do when you're not really sure. And yeah.
Also, Waukesha West has a vast majority of, I mean, a vast amount of high school athletics, such as cross-country, boys and girls, football, volleyball, and soccer. These sports all together help us work as a team, foster collaboration, communication, and competition that are going to be really useful skills in the workforce. Also, if you want to go into exercise science or be an athletic trainer in the future, you can help volunteer and support Missy, our athletic trainer at West.
Moving on to involvement, we have our DECA program that takes many trips. Last year, they went to California and were able to present themselves and get a collaborative experience with other people that are involved in DECA. We also have our Student Council that has a majority of students, a very diverse group of students with different ideas that are able to share and make our school environment better, and everyone feels welcome. We also have our HOSA program where you're able to get an insight on medical fields as well. You take multiple field trips. We went to WCTC, and we're able to get a hands-on experience with the medical field.
This is where West has led us. West has, through everything West has offered, has led me to find my passion of medicine, specifically anesthesia.
West has been able to guide me in the path of exercise science, and I plan on going to Texas A&amp;M.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for them at all?
There might be some questions. Anyone like to start? Very nice presentation, first of all.
Yes. Thank you.
What motivated your decision for Texas A&amp;M?
I lived in Texas, and I loved it. And Waukesha West, with Mrs. Stigler, the Health Occupations teacher, she went through a bunch of schools with me and helped me find that they had the best program for what I wanted to accomplish.
It's exciting. It's hard to stay focused for the next nine months. Congratulations on making a decision. That's a big step.
Thank you.
Mrs. Koenig.
Aiden, what piqued your interest with anesthesiology?
Well, throughout my life, I've really liked medicine and health. I actually wanted to be a veterinarian, but then I realized that I'd have to put dogs down, so I didn't want to. So then, I was thinking, there's got to be a way I can help people and be in on all the surgeries, so I thought an anesthesiologist would be the best way for me to provide aid and care to everyone.
How wonderful. Anyone else? Mrs. Voight.
We often think of the Health Academy as being a self-experience, so I'm wondering what courses you're able to take at West to give you the head start that you're having for these amazing career choices.
Our co-op program is an amazing place to start. I've been able to be alongside Missy Hansen and get an insight on exercise science as she's our sports medicine director.
Also, Health Occupations gives us, yesterday, we watched actually a video on a bypass surgery that helped us get, I guess, not a hands-on experience, but a pretty close, up-close and personal experience.
So it was beautiful timing to follow, obviously, the co-op awards for the community to be able to share some of this experience as well.
That's wonderful. Who else? All right. Well, thank you very much for being here tonight. Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
All right. We're now at the section of our meeting where there's an opportunity for citizens to speak. We have one speaker tonight, which means our speaker will have up to five minutes to complete their comments, but will be notified at three minutes. We expect speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future board or committee meetings. Speakers are here to address the board, not the audience. The school board does not endorse any comments made by members of the community here tonight. We would like to remind our community members of the impact of their words on others and that our children are watching. We commit to communicating with you in respectful and productive ways and ask that you do the same. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the board and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between the board and the audience. Visual aids cannot be used, and the area behind the speaker and podium will be cleared during public comment. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cell phone. Our speaker tonight is Paul Reese.
Last week, this past Monday, I watched the FNF meeting, which I have to say, I would like to recommend everybody to watch the FNF meeting, which is the first time I've ever said that. I usually find that one highly boring, and yet it was fantastic. It really was, because you had the custodians here, and I really want to congratulate them on a job well done. What they did this summer was absolutely remarkable. It was incredible. But I think they, I really think they understated what an incredible accomplishment their coordination had to be to finish all these jobs on time. I mean, there was a lot done, and you have to get inspection. You can't just miss something and come back to it. That has to be inspected before it moves on. It was really a dance that they did, and they really understated what an accomplishment that alone was. I'd also like to thank this board for making the tough decisions that made this possible. For example, closing down a couple of schools and selling a couple of buildings, along with the wise spending of one-time COVID funds. This board really came through for this community in doing this. It really made a difference. And people do not know what was all accomplished in this summer, because I didn't know what was done. And I remember running into Kelly and saying, hey, I thought you guys just tear things down. What are you doing at South? Because they were putting in new bleachers. It really was an incredible feat what they pulled off this summer. Now, I'd like to switch gears. So, and a question. What does hypocrisy and pride have in common? They both are attributes best seen in others. How many of you remember the uproar on pornographic books in the libraries here in this town? Anyone remember that? I believe the left, I believe the left, liberals, strong left, best argument for keeping that filth in our school is the fact that how many people that don't want their kids to possess these type of books allow their kids to have unprotected smartphones? Do they not understand what's on these things? Really? Do they not, do people not get it? There is more pornography in our schools today than there ever has been in history, and still, we wonder why there are mental health crises in our schools. I'm going to add something else here. You think people just do drugs in front of their kids? Do you think they just do drugs in front of their kids and then? No. Pornography is viewed in front of their kids as well. I knew someone grew up who was ravaged by that, by one of their parents. So don't think it doesn't happen. How many of you, okay, do the, there is more, okay, there. All right. Snapchat, okay, now I'm going to say something about my daughter. Snapchat is like a foreign language, all right? It's best, if you're in a school and you don't know anybody, you've just been dropped in, you speak a foreign language, you want to talk and communicate with your peers. If they're all communicating through Snapchat, what do you want to do? What do you want? What do you need? You want Snapchat because that's what everybody's communicating through. And people don't understand the consequences of this app and what's on it, because it's not very nice. If everything that is on the phones, if everything, if I took everything that is on the phones in just one high school, one of our high schools, in one weekend, and I put it in a magazine, and I handed out that magazine the following Monday, do you think I would fill this room up with parents complaining? I guarantee I would fill this room up. And yet, parents are so complacent that they give these kids these phones and let them do it. And Snapchat gets away with peddling porn. It is legal for them to peddle child pornography, and it is obscene that it's allowed to happen. And I just, I'm so frustrated by this, though. Thanks.
Our first course of business tonight is Minute Approval. We have three sets of minutes for your consideration: the September 11th regular board meeting, September 11th executive session, and September 11th public budget hearing. Mrs. Voight.
I move to approve all three sets of minutes as presented.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Brooks. Any discussion? Mrs. Eddinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Eric Brooks.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Thomas Harland.
Aye.
Kerry Kazlowski.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Kelly Piasak.
Aye. Passes 9-0. All right. We'll move next to our WEF report, and that'll be given by Mrs. Koenig.
Thank you, Madam President. The Waukesha Education Foundation Board of Directors met on October 3rd, 2024. All Board of Education members should have received a copy of this gorgeous 2023 annual report, as well as some fabulous marketing materials and a document with talking points about WEF. WEF asks that you review that information and reach out with any questions, and then share it with someone in your personal or professional network. WEF is looking forward to talking with the board later this year or early next year about how the Board of Education can help drive our growth. Speaking of driving growth, a huge shout-out to Sue Eddinger, Dr. Seibert, and all of the building administrative assistants for an incredible launch to the 2024-2025 Casual for a Cause program. At the time of this creation of this report, they have already raised over $13,000. A reminder that the Evening for Education date is Tuesday, March 18th, 2025, so mark your calendars. We'll be rolling out sponsorship opportunities soon, and we hope that you will all plan to join us again this year. Annually, the Waukesha Education Foundation Incorporated recognizes individuals and groups and businesses who have made a significant contribution to the education of the School District of Waukesha. The 2024 WEF Award nomination window is still open and will close on 12/31/2024. Visit the website at www.waukeshaeducationfoundation.org and click on the awards link. There are three categories of recognition, each honoring a different sector of our community that makes a big difference. Corporate Partner Award, there's two nominees. Corporate Partner Award, there's two nominees so far. The Community Partner Award, there's one nominee so far. And Sally Jo McChalko Lifetime Excellence in Education Award, there's two nominees so far. Please feel free to nominate an organization or an individual. Winners will be honored at the Evening for Education in March. We are continuing to seek new sponsors and new board members. We are in great need of a new treasurer, as our current treasurer has been on the board for over seven years. We have also set all of our 2024-2025 dates for special events, so please mark your calendars. The WEF Evening for Education is 3/18/25. The Partners in Education Reception is 6/17/2025, and the Annual Gulf Owning is 8/7/2025. Madam President, that concludes my WEF report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Koenig. Moving on to the consent agenda, we'll begin with Mr. Clark presenting our gifts.
Yeah, there's two gifts to report out tonight. Hadfield Elementary received $2,800 from Waukesha County Community Foundation to provide extra educational opportunities for their students. And Hillcrest Elementary received $1,000 from Joy Miller, $500 to be used for the art program, and $500 will be used to pay off the lunch balances.
Thank you. Your agenda includes various categories for approval this evening. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity in a moment. There were no expulsion actions for your consideration. There are policies enclosed in the consent agenda. Those include Policy 2451, Program or Curricular Modifications, and Policy 144.5, Board Member Behavior and Code of Conduct. Policy 167.3, Public Comment at Board Meetings, was sent back to committee for further discussion, so that will be part of the committee report this evening. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, please indicate so at this time. Mrs. Voight.
I would like to pull Policy 0144.5, Board Member Behavior and Code of Conduct.
Okay, and we will take that up during the policy committee report? That's okay? All right. Mr. Barowski, will you please present the amended consent agenda for approval?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So we have one resignation, one retirement, and one new contract for approval this evening. I move that the consent agenda be approved as revised. Second.
Seconded by Mr. Zanobia. Any additional discussion? Okay, Mrs. Eddinger.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Eddie Koenig.
Aye.
Eric Brooks.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Thomas Harland.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes nine zero. And we'll move next to the superintendent's report. Dr. Seibert.
All right, thank you, Dr. Piasik. First this evening, I will turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Gennerman, who will provide the overnight field trip report.
All right, we'll hold on to your seats. We have several to share tonight. So north, we have cross-country state meet, going to Wisconsin Rapids. Also at north, we have the varsity dance invite. For south, we have girls' swimming invite that would be in Cedar Falls. And then southeast sports, a state championship that would be in Wasaw. West has several, so the following are for west. We have TREC, which is Make 48 Conference that they were invited to. Also choir has an invite. Wrestling will be in Devil's Lake. Another wrestling tournament possibly in Nashville, depending on how the students perform. And girls' wrestling in Wasaw, and possibly Wrestling JV, the state tournament for boys. Also at west, we have cheerleading, National High School Cheer Championship in Orlando, Florida, possibly based on the group performance. And then we also have wrestling, the WIA Individual State Tournament in Wasaw for the boys team. All three high schools have put in, and their field trip permissions have been approved for the DECA State Conference and competition in Lake Geneva, and also the DECA National Conference and competition that would be in Orlando if students do qualify for those.
Thank you, Ms. Gennerman. Next, I simply wanted to again congratulate our Community Partner Award winners and thank them for their support of the school district of Waukesha, our students, and our staff. And then finally this evening, I want to recognize all of you for your hard work and dedication during what is Board of Education Week here in Wisconsin. So it's a pleasure to serve with you and under your leadership, so thank you very much. That concludes my report, Dr. Piasik.
Thank you, Dr. Seibert. All right, we will move into our committee reports for tonight, and we will begin with Student Services, presented by Mr. Zanobia.
Thank you. Our committee met on October 1, and we had one action item and two discussion information items on our agenda. The first action item was Policy 2451, Program or Curriculum Modifications. That policy language was revised to reflect the option included in its statute for a designee of the board to deal with such requests. Districts where this process has been delegated to a designee of the board should adopt this revision to assure the board had formally provided for that process. Niola suggested that the name be changed from Alternative Education Programs to Program or Curriculum Modifications. On a vote of five to zero, the Student Services Committee approved this update, and it was presented in our consent agenda. Our first discussion item was the role of alternative education teacher. We had been doing a number of series throughout the year, past year, on the role of certain teachers and officers within the district. And throughout this presentation, we had the alternative education teacher, Mr. Robert Kopinski from East Alternative School, who spoke to us in the committee about working with students at East. Throughout his presentation, he stressed the importance of collaboration with students to meet them where they are at. The curriculum is personalized, competency-based, learning that actively engages students in shaping their educational experiences. The grading system is open and transparent to the students. They know the standards that need to be met successfully to level up. Opportunities are given to them to revise the work based on teacher and peer feedback. Also, part of the program at East is engaging with the community and connecting the classroom to the real world. Through partnerships with local organizations, students participate in service learning and volunteerism. Our second discussion information item was Bridging Brighter Smiles. We had representatives from that organization in to present information about their efforts to provide gentle hygiene services charitably for the school district of Waukesha. Bridging Brighter Smiles services are open to all students in the district who don't see a dentist for regular teeth cleanings. They bridge the gap between need and access to care by providing services within schools during the school day. They also handle the marketing, enrollment, and scheduling with parents directly. Aside from arranging a date in private space, the schools that would participate would not be involved in all those efforts. And that would complete our committee report for Student Services. We will meet again on Tuesday, November 7 at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. Any questions or comments before we move on? All right, thank you, Mr. Zanobia.
Thank you.
Our next committee is Human Resources and Compensation, presented by Mr. Barowski.
All right, thank you, Mrs. President. So the HR and Compensation Committee met earlier this evening, as you know, at 6:00 p.m. There are no action items on the agenda for approval or discussion this evening, but we did have a couple of discussion items. The first one was the review of the 2025-2026 School Calendar Draft. Since it's so early in October, it is a bit more of a preliminary draft than normal. Still need to get feedback from teacher group and parent group, but the draft that you have a copy of, just some highlights, the first day of school would be Tuesday, September 2, and then the last day, Thursday, September, or excuse me, Thursday, June 11. Wait, September 11, that would be not popular. So June 11 as the last day of school. With this draft here, it is kind of a rare situation where the Christmas break would be two full weeks. So again, once we get more feedback, we'll come back with a draft for approval. Any questions or comments on that item? All right, the next item is the Starting Teacher Salary Discussion. So committee received some information from Ms. Thede on starting salaries for new teachers. We did learn that, so this is based on the 2023-2024 salaries. And we are, excuse me, the school district of Waukesha is currently in the third quartile. We do think that's a little bit lower than in previous years. Some of the reasoning behind that that we can surmise is the other districts have, a few other districts have made a real push in the last couple of years to address their starting salary and ended up doing, you know, entire compensation restructuring. If you recall, one of the, I guess, strategies that the district used was using stipends rather than increases. So those two things combined could, you know, be a reason for us being in the third quartile. Ms. Thede did believe that putting us at or above the $50,000 mark would help put us back to the top quartile. And given the discussion and that information, Ms. Thede is going to go back, do some more research on the compensation structure, and address the district's compensation structure overall, not just the starting salaries. And that concludes my report.
Any questions?
Would moving the starting salary to that $50,000, would that bring us up to the top quartile?
That's the belief, yep.
I appreciate the committee taking a look at this. I would say for future or for subsequent consideration, understanding the financial impact of any of those shifts would be really helpful. So the competitive information is extremely valuable. But any of that analysis before we would take any action, I think, would be really helpful. Anything else?
All right, Mrs. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Barowski. Next up is the Policy and Government Relations Committee, presented by Mr. Wad.
Thank you. The Policy and Government Relations Committee met on Monday, October 7, 2024. As a result of the request to remove from the consent agenda policy revisions to Policy 0144.5, we do now have an action item for the full board to consider. I think perhaps, and these revisions were primarily driven by Niola update. Dr. Seibert, could you just give us a recap of the reasons for these particular changes being included tonight?
Certainly, Mr. Wad. So the first change was a change in the title, the recommended title of the policy, to add the word communications in, so Board Member Behavior, comma, Communications, and Code of Conduct. There was, under General Expectations of All Board Members, a new letter A was added that states attend all scheduled board meetings insofar as possible and become informed concerning the issues to be considered at those meetings. Under letter C, there was just the addition of the title of the policy. The policy had been already labeled 0144.3, but then conflict of interest was added. Under letter N in that same segment, this was a district recommendation to strike reference to named organizations and rather say sponsored by professional development organizations. So the whole sentence would read, inform themselves about current educational issues by individual study and through participation in programs, providing needed information such as those sponsored by professional development organizations, as opposed to stating the Wisconsin Association of School Boards and the National School Board Association. So that, should any of those change, as they have in recent times, we wouldn't have to go back to the policy, but would rather would reference professional development organizations. And then there, from there, there are just a couple of, on page three, additional policy references. Public records is added to reference Policy 8310. Board member information requests to reference Policy 0143.2, and Policy 0155, adding committees. And then there was an addition, also under enforcement on page three, to talk about the board president being the primary person who would contact legal counsel. However, in the case of the board president being accused of violating the policy, the vice president would be the one to contact legal counsel, which we discussed at the committee level as well. So I think that summarizes it, Mr. Wad.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Seibert. So these revisions were adopted by the Policy and Legislative Affairs Committee, and I would move to adopt these revisions as presented.
Are we allowing for discussion?
We are, for sure. But there is a motion made, and I think it's fair.
Second.
And it's seconded, so now we're open for discussion, sure. Please.
I raised no vote for the approval of this document, mainly because of N, as my first, and there are two additional reasons that I will share for the reason why I do not support this. As stated, the change that was made in N is to drop the recognition of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards and the National School Boards Association. And I think that that would be something that we definitely would have to note under the 2023 Niola, you know, the recommendation from Niola, because that would not be something that I can imagine that Niola would recommend. You know, our involvement in Niola is because of her involvement in the State School Board Association. That's where I, you know, I first learned about it, and I think the other board members that, you know, have approved use of that program over the years. I really feel that just because we're taking a year off from our involvement in them, in Wasby, for nearly 100 years, the 421 school boards in the state of Wisconsin have looked to them as being the source for information related to current educational issues. And even if we're not a member of the association, I think they are still doing a lot to help us to know about what the current issues are. You know, I really don't think there's, you know, there's a need to remove them. And if we would, we would definitely have to say in the reference that this is, you know, Waukesha School Board Edit. You know, because I can't imagine that Niola would recommend to actually do that. I think that, you know, there's no need to strike them as, you know, a source of current educational information. You know, just because we're taking, you know, a stand this year would not be part of the organization. You know, they have an amazing involvement, you know, amazing record for that. My second concern is related to, actually, three reasons. In I, it mentions the idea that we should be, in Section I, we should recognize that they should, you know, make policy decisions only after full discussion at publicly held meetings. And I think something as important as our Board Member Behavior, Communications, and Code of Conduct is something that I needed, I felt we needed to pull from the consent agenda to at least talk about for the community to realize what are our school board, you know, expectations as far as our conduct and communication. You know, it's our code of conduct, it's our guidelines. And I think that that's significantly important to be looking at that on a public forum. Under N, excuse me, under, the next part that I would like to take a look at is the idea of, Item K. The statement there says that we encourage the free expression of opinion of all board members. And I believe that that's an extremely important concept, but I have not experienced that since I have, during my second term here on the school board. I have attempted to suggest topics for consideration to be heard and to be added to different board agendas and have been denied. When I raised that concern at our discussion, it was pointing out the fact that, you know, the people that are in charge of committees have the right to choose what's on their agendas, and that's true. But the concept behind that statement is that it's important to allow people that have a different opinion than the majority may have, a chance for them to be heard. As a teacher of parliamentary procedure for decades, one of the main concepts of parliamentary As, as a teacher of parliamentary procedure for decades, one of the main concepts of parliamentary procedure is that it gives a forum in which the minority can be heard. You know, again, may not, may not win the outcome, but they have, have a chance to at least be heard. As I read this policy, that is proposed, it says that indeed restrictions on board members' rights granted by policy can be denied if you have done anything to, in violation of our Board of Conduct. And at that point, they can include requesting items for a board meeting agenda. You know, so as a punishment, you can say that a board member cannot suggest an item for an agenda. But I don't feel that I've broken the code of conduct, that I would not be in a situation where I could suggest topics for the agendas, as, as has happened four different times in my second term on this board. So I think there are several reasons why I, I think it's important to review this before you actually vote on it tonight. One of the things is item P. I ask, what does this mean? Item P says refrain from using your board positions for personal partisan gain. And I asked what that means, and no one on our policy committee was able to answer that. And I think it's really important to know what we're expected to be living up to, you know, if, if we have a code of conduct to be living with. So what does it mean to refrain from using your board position for personal partisan gain?
Okay, Mrs. Kostrowski.
Thank you, I'm going to try to digest, because that was a lot. So to the, the first three points that Mrs. Voight mentioned, I think are worth clarifying for a couple of pieces. The first one for Neola. Neola serves as a opportunity for us or a recommender for us to create and write our policies. They are not the owner of them, these are recommendations. The owner of every policy is the school district of Waukesha, so whether or not they may put something in to recommendations, doesn't mean that we have to agree to it, doesn't mean I need to put it in. We are free as a board to change that. But additionally, I think that over the last 24 months, we've seen some movement in board values and board makeups that have changed. Waukesha is not the only district that has left the Wasby. I don't foresee that we'll, we will be the only ones. And so carving that out, you know, if I take a look at professional organizations in a policy, in a corporate level, our employee handbook would encourage professional development within any organization or learning environment that an employee would feel, would give them career-changing. And so carving out Wasby because we are no longer a member, and I, it is not my understanding that we are only going to be a non-member for one year. I believe that, under the current makeup of the board, that we are not going to remain, or we will remain, a non-member. And so I think it is really important for us to understand that Neola serves as a guide. Professional learning is something that is available to the board. I would encourage the board to find ways to look for that as to areas that are, pique their interest, that would make them a better board member, but I think that is important. And then to the last, kind of the piece about understanding the makeup and the relationship between a board president and a chair of a committee. There is given power to that role, and I, and I can speak to a couple of the recommendations that I've seen that have been pushed to FNF. It is my responsibility to not only assess the recommendation, understand knowing where I, the makeup of the board is, understanding where the community has voiced their concerns through voting over the last pieces, and to make out an informed decision that I think is best as to what carries the weight for our agenda. So I, while I understand that we have the right to ask, and I think that as this board, we do do a very good job of publicly, transparently talking about issues and differences of opinion, I, I think that the discretion and the power that is given to a president and the, and the committee chairs is of that nature. It is given granted with that expectation that they are going to set an agenda that is the best for the district, the best for the community, and moving that forward.
Anyone else? Mr. Wad?
Yeah, I'll dovetail on the reference to concerns about dropping Wasby as a, I guess, recommended professional development organization. Regardless of what anyone thinks of Wasby, or the National School Board Association, or any number of other professional development organizations that center around school district policy and operations and governance, including those things at the expense of others is just bad policymaking. We want to call out that any professional development organization which deals with those topics would be suitable for a board member to stay current on educational issues through their individual study or for participation in any of their programs. And I personally don't want to get into a position where we, as either a policy committee or a board, are trying to identify which are the favored organizations that we need to call out in policy, and/or arguing about whether others should or shouldn't be included. I can tell you right now, I can think of an organization that if I were to suggest it be included, will, we would have a number of people, perhaps at least one board member, maybe more, that would object to it because they believe it to be partisan. I also know we would likely have constituents, because we have, we have heard constituents complain about our board members participating in some of the programming they offer. I wouldn't recommend we include them either. The whole point here is to make it so that the board members themselves can choose which organizations they choose to use as a vehicle by which they become better informed about the issues facing education and the different potential policy prescriptions, pending legislation, actions you can take within your own district depending upon the challenges you face, and we should leave it at that.
Mr. Brooks, and then Mr. Zanobia.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Wad mentioned a lot of the things that I was going to touch on regarding this. But I think in addition to just making sure that as a district, we're not showing favoritism to one professional development organization over another, because there's a lot of them out there right now, and there are a lot of them that will come after. I think the, the other important piece is by removing specific membership organizations from this policy, we're giving a lot of latitude to future boards, and we're making it so that we don't have to constantly revise this policy as we enter into new agreements with different membership organizations, or we leave different membership organizations. It just keeps it generic so that we don't have to constantly go back and decide, okay, which, which professional development organization is worthy of being enshrined in policy? I, I agree with Mr. Wad. I don't think we should be picking and choosing which organizations should be enshrined in our policy, because you're absolutely right. If we were to pick the Wisconsin Institute for Law and Liberty to put them in policy, we would have a number of people who'd be upset, and I wouldn't support that, because I don't think we should be showing favoritism to them, just like I don't think we should be showing favoritism to other organizations, especially ones that we are no longer members of.
Mr. Zanobia.
Yeah, so if I recall, I, I don't believe, we've had an association with the National School Board for, for a long time, correct?
Right, a number of years.
You know, when you see that in there, that's probably just boilerplate, Neola would be my guess. I, I know that the issue was raised back in, I think, '22, when, when the NSBA made a big stink about parents going to board meetings, and that really blew up on them. Now, you know, Wasby has no affiliation like that, they're certainly not that kind of organization, but I, I agree, if, if we're too specific about who we name here, to Mr. Wad's point, we can name a lot of organizations that should or shouldn't be here. So I think there's a lot of latitude granted there. I, I think, you know, as, as great of an organization as far as the information that Wasby provides, I think it's, it, it may misguide some people to think that that is the one-stop shop for anything that you may need. So I, I don't have any objection to, to what's been discussed with, with letter N. I would, I would ask, and I was not able to watch any of the discussion on this on Monday. So I don't know if, if point P was discussed, which was to refrain from using board positions for personal partisan gain. So I, I don't know what the concern there would be. I think that's, again, very, very vague, so that, you know, when there is a situation that comes up where maybe that is happening, the board and public can look at that to decide if that's happening. But generally speaking, I, I don't know why that point would be concerning to the committee, if at all.
Mr. Wad?
Yeah, so I think one of the things that's very interesting is that when the question was raised, what does P mean, there was nobody at the table that could answer it. One might ask why we didn't amend the policy right there to remove it. If no one can explain it, then why is it there? I think we left it open so that, perhaps Dr. Seibert, who may have some historical knowledge on this, or had contacts he could check with, and Dr. Seibert, I believe you did get the opportunity to speak to someone on that. Would you like to address that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, Mr. Wad, sure. So I did speak with our Neola consultant after the meeting in regards to P, which is refrain from using board positions for personal partisan gain. And that language has been in the policy since its adoption in 2021. The use of the word personal is understood, likely, right? That you would refrain from using your position to benefit personally. I, I don't think that's a, a stretch. And essentially, in talking with him and then looking at our other policies, it really borders on conflict of interest, and we have a policy on conflict of interest, 014.3. And then that policy in turn references state statute 19.59, which is the Code of Ethics for Local and Government Officials, Employees and Candidates. And there's a specific statement in that policy, statute, I should say, 1959, 1G7, that says, no district board member may use or attempt to use the position held by the member to influence or gain unlawful benefits, advantages, or privileges personally or for others. And so it's the or for others in that that creates the nexus to the partisan aspect. So the for others aspect is talking about essentially using your board member's status to help endorse or support a political candidate or a political party. And as a board member in that status, you are an elected official, you have a different level of knownness, if you will, in the community. And so it's, it's intended to say that would not be advised, right? Certainly without your board hat on, that's different, right? Then you're acting as an individual in your individual capacity, and that's different, similar to how we talk about, you know, talking and saying, I'm not speaking as a board member when I'm expressing this opinion, if you will. So that's, that's how I have come to, to appreciate it. And so that night, we talked about the fact that school boards are nonpartisan, right? They are nonpartisan elections. A state superintendent race is nonpartisan. Might not always feel like that, but at its core, it is. So what we're talking about, when we're talking about partisan, is state assembly races, state senate races, national elections, things where there are partisan politics involved, not things that are generally nonpartisan offices. So maybe I'll just stop there. That's, that's how I, in talking to him and then going through some of our other policies, that's how I was, I was able to at least make sense of it for me.
Mr. Wad?
Yeah, so, Dr. Seibert, I appreciate the effort you went to, to, to provide that context for us. I might argue that there is a more important operative word, and that is unlawful. You had, you had quoted the statute, and it talked about the unlawful use. So if I remove the word unlawful, I might, I might agree with that broad interpretation. Once you introduce the word unlawful from the statute, to me, that describes something else altogether. And I would return back to the problem that we continued to stumble on, on Monday night. What does unlawful mean? What is that referencing? What actions would be considered unlawful in that regard? So I, at this point, I'm just going to make the, I'm going to make the motion to amend this policy to remove item P, refrain from using their board positions for personal gain, because I still don't see what purpose it serves. I don't see how it informs us in terms of behavior or informs the community either as to, as to what that means and what is to be expected of us.
Second.
Okay, so we have an amendment that's moved and seconded. We could have some discussion about that. Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, so I, I agree to, with what Mr. Wad and I know, Ms. Voight kind of not in agreement with this as well, that if we don't know, i- if none of us at this table, when we were discussing this on Monday, can explain what this is, then perhaps it shouldn't be there. And that was kind of my, my takeaway as I was walking away from the committee meeting on Monday was, yeah, if none of us can say what this is, does it really have that much value? And I appreciate Dr. Seibert clearing that up, but I still think it's, that we had to jump through all those hoops to understand what a one-sentence phrase means in a gigantic policy. I, I don't know that it carries that much value. And I think I, I've, I've always had this kind of debate on, regarding like endorsements for that. Because, yeah, and you're, you know, you're acting in your individual capacity, not as a representation of what the board is, but I don't know if the general public is always able to differentiate your elected official position from what you're doing personally. For me, and maybe this is getting back to Mr. Wad's question regarding the phrase unlawful, my question, you know, how I always interpret it is, if I am doing this political thing, if I'm using my position as a board member here at a, you know, public forum where tax dollars are at use, I cannot use that to advocate for a individual candidate or position. If it is outside of the public hours where public dollars are being used, that is my personal, you know, personal time, that is my personal support, and it's, it's still me. You can't separate the, the title from, from my individual support for somebody or another, but it's not being, it's not using the public taxpayer dollars and resources to, to advocate for something. So I'm, I largely seconded this motion just because I, I agree, if, if none of us can explain what this means, then perhaps it shouldn't be there. But I just wanted to kind of clarify that before we take a vote on it.
Mrs. Voight?
And my question was, does this mean when there are candidates running for, you know, state elected positions, you know, whatever level they might be beyond school board, if you would say you're endorsing them and say, you know, you're naming a school board member, would that fit as a, you know, conflict with this policy? You know, and we had a situation a few years back where one of our board members actually did a commercial, you know, in support of a governor candidate, you know? And that caused all kinds of stir, you know? It's not something you're supposed to be doing with your, with your school board hat on. You know, you, as an individual, yes, but you have to take off your school board hat when you're making those, you know, a recommendation like that, especially when it's a television commercial. You know, it's, it's pretty evident, you know, that the, the tie is there.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes, I have a few things. Dr. Seibert, could you just repeat that phrase of clarifying the partisan that Neola described? It was more like for a group or for people you know, or something, or others?
The statute reference that I read, maybe?
Yeah, maybe that's what it was. Just for
I'll start if it's wrong, please, Tom. No, excuse me. No district board member may use or attempt to use the position held by the member to influence or gain unlawful benefits, advantages, or privileges personally or for others. That's state statutory language that's referenced in our conflict of interest policy. So even with the removal of P, you don't lose that reference to that language within the conflict of interest policy.
Got you, okay, I appreciate that.
Oh, thank you.
All right, just going back to some, some things that Mrs. Voight raised, you know, in response to that, I think that to that, I think that any challenge with writing policy is you want it to be general enough to apply to a lot of situations, yet it has to have a degree of specificity to be clear and make sense and people to interpret and take action on. The removal of those two organizations in N, I don't really see that as like something that's punitive because we chose not to be.
Point of order. The discussion now is on my amendment, which is to remove P. Very interested in hearing what you have to say, but I think we should wait till we're back on the main motion before.
Do you have anything with respect? Well, he was talking about P, but then you moved on to the other one. Yeah, so.
Yeah, so that's fine.
Okay, thank you for that. Does anyone else have anything with respect to the amendment? I do. I just wanted to offer a comment here. I think most of what I would say has already been said, so I will try to simplify it. But I have always found that to be somewhat ambiguous. I think I know what it was trying to say, but I think the important thing is that no one individual board member gives up the right to their personal opinion when they get elected to the school board. The most important thing, though, is that we as board members don't somehow use the authority that's bestowed to us as board members to influence in any way that wouldn't represent the interests of the board, because any one of us doesn't have a whole lot of power on our own, right? We only act as an entity. So if you go out and support something on behalf of your role as a board member, you may be violating the conflict of interest or other communication pieces. So frankly, I feel that P is actually redundant, and it was for the reason that Dr. Seibert brought up. We have a conflict of interest policy. There are statutes applied to things like gifts and values received and things that might be potentially unlawful. I think the behaviors related to some of the nonpartisan and partisan elections that people may have an opinion about is everything to do with, like Mr. Brooks said, you can't just, like, you know, say, "I'm this person right now and I'm that person now," but it is really how you represent yourself. And I think that's a really important thing. And I don't think there's anything in P, for me, that clarifies what you can and can't do, because I think it's not always entirely clear. But if you are acting as a board member, you're acting as one of nine who has the authority in aggregate, and I think that that's covered in other aspects of the policy. So I would support that change, but I wanted to share my perspective on that, too. Anybody else on the amendment on the table? Okay, so let's do a roll call on the amendment. So an aye would be that you support striking P, and a nay would be that you don't. Okay.
Thomas Harland.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
David Watt.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Mark Browski.
Aye.
Eric Brooks.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes 9-0. So we are back to all other revisions currently as presented on the policy with P being struck. Back to Mr. Browski.
Okay, just a couple, yeah, a couple of quick things. So for N, the professional organizations, to me, I don't see it as something that's punitive to remove them. I just see it something as more like, more of accuracy. And in this case, it's better to be general and not too specific on the professional organizations. The other thing, Ms. Voight, you mentioned not being able to, or get things on an agenda item. I can remember, I think, two or three, if memory serves, times that you have gotten items on the agenda. So I'm assuming you're talking about not all suggestions, but it's been some?
Right.
Okay, so not all, but some?
Not all.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, I have a couple of things. I also, as far as what organizations we point to in our policies, I generally think that it's just bad policymaking to be naming any specific organization. And I don't think this would be the policy in which we would do it anyway. So I think that as far as, you know, board member behavior communications and code of conduct has literally nothing to do with the names of the organizations that we might go to for professional development. So I think that just is good policy writing, and I support that. The other part that I just wanted to bring up is if we are going to change the title of this policy, and I would just like to make note, it is also referenced in Board Policy 1210, which is the board superintendent relationship, Policy 143.1, which is public expression of board members, and Policy 7544, which is use of social media. So we would need to make technical corrections on the title change of this policy in all of those where it's referenced. And I did want to just clarify that. So the, when I look at the draft, I see the title that's actually bolded, Board Member Behavior, Communications and Code of Conduct, but I didn't see it actually in the header of the policy. So it is officially being proposed with the title change.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that was all I have. Anybody else? Okay, so we have a live motion for the amended policy. Mrs. Eddinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Eric Brooks.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Thomas Harland.
Aye.
Mark Browski.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
No.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
David Watt.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes 8-1. All right, Mr. Watt, back to you.
Thank you, Mrs. President. Okay, in addition to that action item, Dr. Seibert shared the list of policies from the Neola Update, Volume 33, Number 2, May 2024, and policies will be distributed to the appropriate board committees. In addition, Dr. Seibert shared the list of policies with technical corrections from the same Neola update. At the request of a committee member, we will include three of the technical correction policies on the November Policy and Government Relations Meeting Agenda for Discussion, 2221, Special Observance Days, 3216, and 4216, which are staff dress and appearance. Another policy that we, oh, I'm sorry, before I move on, I'll ask if anyone has any questions on any of that. Okay.
Just, Mr. Watt, if I could for a second. I know there was some discussion about technical corrections specifically, and I just wanted to redirect everybody to Board Bylaw 131.1, which is actually entitled Bylaws and Policies, and there's a section in there about technical corrections. And it is pretty clearly spelled out that when a recommendation for technical, it's not actually a recommendation, the superintendent has the authority to make a technical correction. So it's not coming to us as a recommendation or something that's open for discussion. It's coming to us as a communication of what has been corrected. We could, of course, challenge or disagree with whether or not that correction is technical in nature versus substantive in nature, but it does not by definition open up that policy for discussion. So I just wanted to clarify that and point folks back to 131.1 in our bylaws, which references technical corrections. Mrs. Voight?
And we approved all the technical corrections.
I know that.
Yeah, I just recommended that we pull those for discussion.
Yep.
All right, moving on, the other policy that we considered, 0167.3, on public comment at board meetings, was discussed to ensure it is still meeting the needs of the board. Dr. Seibert and I made a few tweaks consisting of reordering material on delineating between public comment and public decorum at board meetings. At the policy committee, the committee suggested additional revisions, which will be brought back to the committee for further discussion and possible action in November. All right, moving on, during the government relations portion of the meeting, our CISA One representative, Mrs. Voight, shared that CISA One is rebranding and shared a list of professional learning opportunities that are now available to school districts through CISA One. Any questions on that? Okay. Also, Dr. Seibert gave an update on potential fire drill legislation that was discussed with Representative Scott Allen. Representative Allen, in turn, reached out to other districts and fire officials regarding whether safety drills can be substituted in place of any of the required monthly fire drills, and determined that fire officials are not in favor of making any changes to fire drill frequency requirements at this time. Questions on that? All right, and finally, Dr. Seibert shared that Senator Julian Bradley is planning to attend the November 11th Policy and Government Relations Committee meeting to discuss artificial intelligence and potentially the 25 to 27 budget. With that, this concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Watt. Our next committee is Finance and Facilities, presented by Mrs. Kozlowski.
The Finance and Facilities Committee meeting met on Monday, October 7. There were no action items and three discussion items. The first discussion items was the Summer 2024 Capital Project Report. Chad Caravoo, Kyle McCarthy, and Joe Hines from the Buildings and Grounds Department were in attendance to update the committee on the 2024 capital improvement projects that were completed. And I do want to highlight, this is, it was an extensive amount of work that was done across nearly every school within our district with an investment price tag of roughly $15 million from the start, and that'll continue through next summer when we finish south. But this was extensive, and the amount that this team did, both to assess what could be done internally versus outsourced, cost-conscious for the district spend, and also, as we talked about in the committee meeting, the utilization of operating costs that were given to us through ESAR funds were used wisely to be able to build out our infrastructure in ways that we did not have to ask our taxpayers to do. And if there's anything to be proud of, it is the ability to be able to manage our dollars wisely, continue to look at how we operate our costs and infrastructure. And again, just a huge kudos to the Building and Grounds team, Chad, Kyle, and Joe. Absolutely impressive what they were able to do. And if you haven't seen the slides on what they did, it's beautiful. Just driving around is gorgeous. The morale from what we hear from all of the teams that get to use it, whether it's indoor or outdoor, is really great.
Mr. Watt.
Yeah, I just, first of all, I want to echo everything that Mrs. Kozlowski has just shared, but I also want to add to that. And I would really encourage people who may be watching or listening to this to go and find the Finance and Facilities meeting and watch that section. I think you'll be, number one, I think you'll be shocked at the amount of work that was done. I know I was. But the other thing that was pointed out to me that I learned, and maybe I was the only one, was the extensive amount of expertise that we have within our maintenance teams to do a lot of this work that doesn't have to be contracted out. And that also is a tremendous savings to the district, which is obviously something to be happy about as a taxpayer. But I also, you know, when I asked, you know, how is it that we have managed to build this advantage in, the answer was great. It's because these are incredibly loyal people with, you know, ties through their family back to this district, and it's because they love working here and serving this district. And I just want, I would be remiss if I didn't call that out for people to become aware of as well. We have tremendous expertise within that group, and we are extremely fortunate as a district to have it.
Mrs. Voight.
I agree with everything they've said. I just want to remind everyone about how we remodeled this building with that same support team. So this is like not a new discovery. You know, we all saw the amazing transition that occurred here to be able to make this, you know, repurposed for our use, you know, and they're just an amazing team. And I think that, yeah, anybody that didn't get a chance to hear their presentation definitely should. So a lot to be proud of.
All right, back to you.
The second discussion item was the 2024-2025 budget. The committee reviewed the updated numbers related to the third Friday pupil count, district property valuation, and updated tax levy projections. The committee was reminded that the DPI will certify the district's equalization aid and voucher program participation levels on October 15. This information will enable the final tax levy and rate to be tabulated. And the last discussion item was the monthly budget report. It was reported that year-to-date revenue and expenditures are within the normal range and are at about 12% for the fiscal year. The next FNF meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 11, 2024, at 5:30 PM in the boardroom. And I also want to remind that the board is also scheduled to approve the final 2024-2025 budget tax levy on Monday, October 28.
Dr. Piasik, this concludes my report. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, moving on to our last committee report for tonight, we have Teaching and Learning, presented by Mrs. Koenig.
Thank you, Madam President. The Teaching and Learning Committee met last week, Tuesday, October 1, 2024. Two discussion and information items appear on the agenda for Teaching and Learning this evening. First, we have an Infinite Campus update. Infinite Campus has served as our student information system for 10 years, and we are one of 146 districts in Wisconsin using it. In fact, 2,800 districts in 46 states with 10 million students use IC every day. The committee received an update on how Waukesha is building efficiencies through system consolidating tasks previously performed on multiple applications to Infinite Campus. This report highlighted information teachers can access on their student roster, how families can make purchases via the school store, and new features within the communications section. Second, we reviewed our continuous improvement strategic planning. This was an update from our continuous improvement efforts. Mrs. Linsacome, Principal of Hillcrest Elementary School, highlighted the shift in language across the system and honed in on the alignment of district strategies, sorry, district strategic actions to the strategic actions developed at the school level. An overview of the elements in each school's strategic action plan was provided. Historically, the school district of Waukesha engaged in a continuous improvement process named Student Advancement in Learning, or known as SAIL. Several continuous improvement lessons have been learned and will continue to be applied to strategic planning at the district and school levels. Madam President, this concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report. Our next meeting will be held on Thursday, note the change, Thursday, November 7, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the boardroom here at the Blair Administration Building. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that concludes our committee reports for tonight. Moving on to other business, are there any recommendations for future board or committee action or discussion items? All right, seeing none. That concludes our business for this evening. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, November 13, here in the boardroom at 6:30 PM. And that concludes our meeting for tonight. Good night, everyone.